I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today is November 28th, 2016.
Aaron's here.
Here.
Whaling.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Basil.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
We have minutes from November 14th. Any changes? Is there a motion?
No.
There's a motion made?
Second.
There is a second. Any questions in the motion? Roll call.
Aaron, yes.
Yes.
Whaling.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Basil.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Of course you work.
Total tax income received since October 24th totals $168,842.58. I have a thank you note from the family of Leroy Book, former village president who passed away. During a time like this, we realize how much our friends and relatives really mean to us to express sympathy will always be remembered. I just want to announce 2017 dog tags are going to go on sale this Thursday, December 1st, and the filing period for the April 4th, 2017 election is from December 12th through December 19th. The village president and three trustee seats will be all up for election. The village hall will be open 8 to 4:30 Monday through Friday and will be open until 5:00 PM on December 19th for the last day of filing as required by state statute.
Any questions in the audience? Please press for your board. If not, find it to the administration trustee.
The first is ordinance adopting property tax levy for 2016, collectible in 2017. Proposed levy is going down by $1,063 due to a lower debt service levy. The total operating levy remains frozen at $605,333. This would be the seventh straight year that the village of Beecher did not raise property taxes, and the philosophy of the board has been if the village can get by without an increase in the assessed value of homes and businesses are declining, we don't want to raise property taxes. According to the assessor this year, once again, assessed property values will be steady. I cannot talk tonight. Therefore, for a seventh straight year, the village will hold a line on property taxes. The one change to the levy is elimination of the public benefit levy and an equal increase in the police protection tax levy, which was recommended by the village auditor, which is on enclosed ordinance.
1252.
We'd like to make motion adopt ordinance number 1252, the property tax levy for 2016, collectible in 2017.
Second. Motion under four. There is a second. Any questions in motion? Roll call.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Whaling?
Yes.
Caprows?
Yes.
Aaron? Yes. Five-year financial plan is being worked on. The number crunching portion that Bob does is complete and the tax portion is being drafted. All funds are balanced looking five years out, although some reserve cash is being used for capital projects and for the advanced purchase of water meters, all funds will remain solid during the five years. We've had an unprecedented dollar value of capital projects in the plan, including $9.2 million for the sewer plant rehab, $1.1 million for Penfield water main replacement, $350,000 for the Gould Street water main replacement, and $5 million for Penfield Street reconstruction for a total five-year capital program of $15.65 million. The plan will hopefully be distributed at the next meeting for consideration in January or February. Bob, do you want to talk about the next one?
Yes. I know if I've talked with you, Marcy, but I've talked to Jonathan about it. We're worried about those bonds. We have a 20-year bond issue out there that has accelerated bond principal payments resulting in levies that will more than double in the last five years of that bond issue. And I was worried about it and I was trying to find ways to what they call abate those bonds. And the plan was to use Walt's sales tax, the money we will receive once his abatement is completed, using that money to abate those bonds. That was one of the plans. And looking through the fine print of our bonds, I was contacted by a company that these bonds are publicly listed, and they said that we have a call option that's due in a year. And apparently 10 years ago when we did the bond issue, somebody was some forethought for a call in there. In the event the town did not grow and in the event interest rates declined, we have the opportunity to do one call in 2018 and extend that bond issue out and drop the levies. I think that's a great idea and I think we should move forward on that. He's putting together three scenarios for the committee to consider, and since it's technical in nature, we should go to committee with it first and then come back to the board and do recommendations. So in the month of December, we'll meet with this bond company and look at our options. This company we've never used before. They're out of Bloomington, Illinois, but they are the ones that brought this to my attention and no one else ever has, including our current financial advisor, so I want to give them a shot. And all their costs are upfront. They tell you exactly upfront what they make out of the deal, what it costs for bond counseling. We'll get these levies back to a reasonable manner in the future. I think it's, we have to look at the different options. But it was a a limerick pass that we put into that bond issue 10 years ago that I forgot all about that we put it in. So interest rates, by the way, are, right now, a 20-year rate is three and a half. That rate, that 20-year rate built in is about 5.7. So we have more than a 2% drop just in the rate by restructuring the bond issue. So there's a chance to save some money.
Okay. So we will meet in December?
Yes.
Our committee and talk about it. Consider a motion authorizing removal of a due-to public infrastructure from general fund in the amount of $28,584. This due-to has been on the books since 2007 when the first half percent sales tax was imposed and the auditor has recommended that it be taken off the books. We have no way of knowing if the funding was used by general fund for a project from transfer to MFT for a street project. To clean up the books and eliminate this 12-year-old due-to, it is recommended that the board authorize its elimination as recommended by the new village auditor. I will make that motion to remove the due-to public infrastructure from general fund in the amount of $28,584.
Motion under four. Is there a second?
Second.
If you second, any questions in motion? Roll call.
Aaron's?
Yes.
Caprows?
Yes.
Whaling?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
That is my report.
Public buildings and properties are of recreation worth a figure.
Okay. Over the winter, the committee is going to meet. Brian, take note.
Yes.
We're coming up with, we're going to discuss fireman's park rules and park maintenance. So we're going to do that over the winter. It seems to be, you know, our parks are getting more and more use. There's a lot of people that want to rent and lease them, and we're going to come up with some rules and different things like that. So we have something to follow. The next item is the HVAC unit on the roof has not been working properly. As a matter of fact, it's nice in here now, but our local service technician found that the safety circuit continues to pop, requiring a manual reset on the roof. This is due to a rusted-out heat exchanger. The unit is old and needs to be replaced. It can be repaired, but it would be half the cost of a new unit and something else might go wrong to the compressor in the blower box. We are in the process. In fact, we just received our fifth proposal today, and we believe that this cost will be less than $12,000. Since it's an unbudgeted item, the village board needs to approve of the purchase, but since it is two weeks for the next meeting, we're asking permission to move forward on this project. What we're going to do as a committee is we're going to take these five bids, we're going to digest them, look at them, and we're going to make the decision to get the unit done. So we're going to set that up for the committee. So what I am asking is to consider authorizing the committee to approve a proposal not to exceed $12,000 for the replacement of the HVAC unit on the roof of the village hall. I'd like to make that motion.
Motion under four. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion or questions?
Just one thing.
Go ahead, Brian.
This HA, oh, HEALG, is that an addition?
That's an addition. We'll talk about that in our committee meeting.
It's optional. I don't believe we have it up there now, but it's something that they wanted to value recommended that we put on there. The other thing I wanted to say is we're kind of limited as to what kind of unit we put on the roof unless we want to change the curb stop, but that involves cutting into the roof. I think we were probably limited to using the curb stop we have up there.
Okay. So we're going to look at these proposals, check them out, and then we'll make a recommendation.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Whaling?
Yes.
Caprows?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
That is my report.
If you find building in Zoria, trustee here.
There'll be no PCC meeting until January. There's no significant issues at this point in time, so we're going to wait till after the holidays on that. And the building department looking for it was in close for your review.
Mr. Police Department, trustee Coleman.
Police Department monthly report and the code enforcement monthly report are enclosed. Excuse me. Status report on emergency management agency of community policing. Dennis Stachinho is here this evening to give the update on the Beecher EMA and community policing efforts. Dennis?
Thank you. In regards to EMA, as you know, I just started in September. We are up and running almost. We have 12 applications. We're doing backgrounds right now, fingerprinting. We have three vehicles that are up and running. We've got the box truck up and running again, too. And unfortunately, we haven't had a procedure and callouts, but we were utilized in the last two days, and I think our EMA helped the public works with our water main breaks with a total of approximately 22 hours spent out there directing traffic. These are volunteers, of course, under my guidance, but they're dedicated people that came out and helped us in a need when we're not even up and running. As far as our community policing, it is going forward. I met with the schools. We're hosting a food drive with EMA to benefit our food pantries here in town. And also, we are hosting or getting a program, Reading for a Reason, with children's play. They're going to donate books to have in our squad cars and at the police department for children in crisis, so that's forthcoming. We had a great Halloween with the EMA cars out handing out candy. That went very well. But most importantly, today, I'd like to present to the village president and the village board. This was done prior to my arrival, and I think it's a great accomplishment, but the Will County Emergency Management Agency Municipal Emergency Management Certification, accordance with the Illinois Emergency Management Agency Act and rules propagated thereon, the Beecher Emergency Services and Disaster Agency is granted certification May 1st, 2016 through May 1st, 2018. This is presented by Honorable Lawrence M. Walsh and Mr. Harold R. Demron, the Emergency Management Director. This is an accomplishment prior to me coming here, and this is, there's only a few agencies on the eastern portion of Will County. And Bob and your crew, whoever did this, this is, you know, is leaps and bounds and makes my job a lot easier. Piattone, I think, is another agency. Moni on the west, or the eastern.
The ones that did the regional plan, right? We all got on board with the regional plan. Crete, Moni, Beecher, Piattone, not University Park, I don't think, Park Forest. Those towns that participated in that regional plan got certified by the state. Getting certified by yourself is tough, you know, but doing a regional plan, being able to get certified, or what is it, two years and three years?
This is actually for two years. May 1st, 2016 through 2018. And again, this shows that this village is moving forward and with the manpower and things, you know, we're going to move forward to assist this community and form those partnerships with the public works, fire department, and, you know, keep moving. And thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Chief, anything to report?
I have nothing to report. I've just had, just a comment on EMA. I've had a lot of positive comments from the public, from the residents that have seen the EMA out during Halloween and also during when we had the three water main breaks at traffic control. Their intervention was well received. We had two officers on and they both were tied up. One was tied up on an arrest, the other was tied up on calls for service. So EMA coming out, providing the traffic control, I mean, that bridge the gap there to free up our officers to continue to do their job. And I think Dennis is doing a wonderful job. We're moving forward with it, and I think we can only improve and I'll get better from here.
Thank you, chief. Any questions to the chief of the cell?
Just thank Beecher EMA for all your help. Great question.
I was going to wait till my turn to talk. Yeah, thanks, Dennis.
You know, safety is the utmost of, you know, everybody. And as it got dark, because they were working, you know, doing their job, you know, we had to do our job, and that was to protect them and, you know, so everybody could go home safe. And it was a lot quicker, even though it took time, it was a lot quicker that we could provide them that service.
Well, you free up our guys to work the water break instead of controlling traffic.
Exactly, absolutely. You know, and God bless them. They're volunteers.
Yeah, right.
So they're volunteering their time and their dedication, and that's what. Unfortunately, like I said, we haven't even formulated procedures and policies that I have a group of people that went through the simulator and who I can trust, and they came out and helped us tremendously. So we have 12 people, and it'll only get better from here.
Whether you knew it or not, what he had to do is hiding a tree out there. I was out there and you didn't know it, but I was pretty happy to see you there, everybody working together, and I was pretty proud to see that we've gotten this far in this short period of time. Didn't want to be there, did you?
I was too, I was focused on my job at hand.
I'm sure. It's a good response.
It's very good.
You didn't want authorized personnel on your job site.
Yeah, we had to kick them off the job site. We'd be too close to construction zone, but that's okay.
Okay. Thanks, Dennis and your crew and everybody. That completes my report.
Thank you, Paul George. Any questions, Paul George?
Water department monthly reports and sewer department monthly reports are in close for your review. Water billing register for the months of September on October are also in close for your review. I didn't notice the pump to bill. Let's, let's see what happens on the next one before we panic, but it's, that's a drop again. It's a decent-sized drop again, so I don't know if we could calculate it all to flushing and the flow testing, but we'll see. See where it's at in two more months. Results of the fall hydrant flushing and flow testing for ISO rating, buddy?
Okay. What I will say is the, yes, I would, I do believe it had a dramatic, actually, result on your pump to bill. You realize every, you know, there's over 400 hydrants that we did flow, and when I did the flow testing, there was 14 hydrants that I had to literally flow at full bore, which is well over 1,200 to 1,400 gallons per minute, and had to run them and then do the test. The good thing is that my test results show that our water system, when it comes to providing water, in the case of a fire for the fire department, turned out in like the 98 percentile. So that's, that's a good thing. I guess you're going to have to wait for the final results from the fire department when they share that with you, but from our end of it, from what I could see, we're really looking very, very well. There were a couple hydrants that, you know, we're going to have to go back and repair. The, I'm going to continue going into where we're at with the main break. What I will say with, with this, though, you know, when you're doing like a total system fall flush, you are stressing out your system, which means you are pulling water all the way through your hydrant at a minimum, probably, I would say, of seven to eight to 1,000 gallons per minute. And you're pulling water, looking for operations, looking for any little bit of index questions that might cause a hydrant to break, and you're also, like I said, pulling out stagnant water, and you start at the north end of town and we pull all the way to the south end of town. Also, when I was doing that, by doing the flow testing, I literally have to open up those hydrants 100%, which means that they're at full bore and you're looking at probably 16 to 18 gallons per minute, and it does stress out the system. Now, we did have a main, I won't even call these main breaks that happened on Indiana Avenue. What's happening there is in the last year, with this total right here, these were service lines on this water main that was, I'm estimating anywhere from 80 to 100 years old. The service taps on them are threaded into the water main themselves, okay? Over all these years, you're looking at it, they're literally splitting where the service line goes into the main, and they're, they're popping off, just like the seventh one. The main themselves, it's an oversized eight-inch thick wall, heavy duty main, but when it does that, you know, you have to understand, and it blows out, it'll cause a split, it'll cause a blow, and it's almost like opening up a hydrant underneath the ground, and the ground starts shaking and it creates havoc. This just happened to happen. I don't know if it's coincidental because of the fact we did stress out the system by doing high flow testing and/or fall flushing with that, but like I said, we're looking at a 100-year-old main that's down Indiana Avenue, and I, I'm not going to say that it's not going to happen again. Odds are, like I said, this is the seventh one, we're looking at the probably the area from Route 1 to the railroad tracks, because everything pretty much to the west of the tracks is, except for maybe a 20-foot section or 40 section, is all plastic. So these are things that are going to continue to happen. When they happen, don't know, coincidental, but these main break was, yeah, a couple issues to deal with. I have a sanitary that is like within two feet of the water main, and you're going to dig down to it. So if, you know, you're going to, we don't have the choice of digging into Indiana Avenue itself. We can only go within a few feet of the Willwell line. If not, have to get special permission, just like I would with the Illinois Department of Transportation for going into Route 1. So we, you have to be very careful on how you're, you're doing this. We ended up actually replacing two service lines and probably about 14 feet of sanitary main during this project, and, you know, thank God, we were, we sent out a NICSIL, had the chief of police send out the NICSIL, sent out the information to all of the trustees. Hopefully, got the information out to the residents. Thank God we had ESDA there because we'd probably still be working, trying to get, you know, traffic's a big thing. They were able to shut it down without shooting anybody, and everybody cooperated. And it was a long task. I mean, we were here, I was leased here from like 6:30 in the morning, Sunday morning, till midnight last night. We were back in here and finished it up this morning. But it's done now. The only thing we've got to worry about is, hopefully, I can get the patches done in a, in a timely fashion before the end of the year.
Question, bud. What I, the water main breaks, when you vowed them off, I noticed big crevices in the ground, and what's the backfill in these trenches where the water mains? Is it sand?
Well, on Indiana Avenue, that's, that's one of the bad things. When they put it in, they had the, I mean, we've got pictures going way back that I've seen where they had the old steam shovel, and there's, when they dug their trenches for that, they were four foot, four to, four to six feet wide, and yes, it's an all, all sand trench backfill. And between that and with the water blowing out, it just literally.
It doesn't help with the integrity of your trench either.
No. It, it, yeah, definitely compromises the structural integrity of your hole. So what would usually cause us a little, you know, four-foot section that ends up out to being a six-foot one. In Indiana Avenue, it's, it's bad news because as you're digging it out, it's literally undermining, you know, the road itself. So then we go back to fill it in. We literally have to fill and throw it back under, and hopefully, we get it, you know, stable enough. So that's where we're at with that.
Mr. Reporter, we've been living with what it's been a long time. It's terrorism, and it doesn't even faze us anymore.
Okay, well, whatever. I don't, you know, I, I'm tired, Bob. I would like to say thank you very much to the ESDA. They were, you know what, they were a blessing, and it's, nobody got hurt, you know, animals were hurt during this movie.
We call those 20s.
I'm just thinking, that would make a great article title.
So, so back to the agenda in a nutshell, fall hydrant flushing and flow testing went well.
Yes, it did. It's done. You're welcome.
Consider a motion authorizing the letting of bids for Penfield Street Water Main Project. We're hoping to go to bid on this project before the next meeting, so it's time to take this next step. So this has been a long time coming, so I will make a motion authorizing the letting of bids for the Penfield Street Water Main Project.
Second.
Motion under four. Second, now third.
Audience, fourth. Aaron's?
Yes.
Caprows?
Yes.
Whaling?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
But one thing, Mr. Chairman, we have to post that notice now in the whole paper, which we're doing today. I was not aware of that. Either was, Baxton Woodwin, the TPA, came in today and said they wanted it posted in the whole paper, so we have another 10-day, 10, in a way.
Yeah, right. That's.
Totally agree.
All right. Safe route to schools. Update, we're still waiting for the beacon to arrive so they can be installed. Any words since the printing of this? No, I'm not worried.
We have approval on our design.
Yeah.
They lost the design in Schaumburg office. I got it.
Yeah.
And we said, well, we'll, we'll send you the, the design and the approval letter. They sent us, no, we have to review it again because we just can't accept our own approval letter. So we're back and reviewing again because they lost the original specs. It's, it's so aggravating.
Yeah. All right. Sidewalk replacement program, which is complete, correct?
Done.
Done and done. Brush and leaf pickup will continue through Monday, November 28th. All leaves and brush must be out by 7:00 AM on that day to be guaranteed to be picked up. That will be the last pass through town, and trucks will then be made ready for snow removal and smoke spraying. And last item is village snowplow routes tweaked. A third truck was added to the north route, which is Hunter's Chase, Montalbano, the, I guess you could call it the northeast side of town. And then some of the stuff was taken from the center route and pushed to the south route. So we'll see how it all works. Every year, we kind of analyze the year before and try to tweak and adjust, and we'll see. So that concludes my report.
Economic Development, Community Relations, trustee Basil.
Okay. Report on the presentation made at Bolt Field. Not only did the village make a presentation, but IDOT reported on the status of the airport. CSX Railroad discussed rail projects in the region, and HITS talked about the future of Bellmore Park. These events took place February, October 28th. Some of the highlights of the meeting, Bob and Greg did a wonderful job highlighting Beecher, but also Mayor Mike Einhorn presented for Crete, Mayor Jay Farquhar for University Park, and Mayor Vivian Covington presented economic development updates for all their communities. And IDOT, Steve Young presented the results of the IDOT and Federal Aviation Administration Economic Impact Studies that predicted nearly $41 billion to $51 billion impact on the airport community. He's the director of the State of Illinois Department of Transportation, Division of Aeronautics. A couple of things he said was the airport brings jobs to the community they serve. Mr. Young said those jobs can be construction, airport operations, service, hospitality, restaurants, retail. Also, the airport facilitates commercial and have a development potential near the airfields as well as attract business partnership opportunities. IDOT acquired General Aviation Airport in Bolt Field in 2014 for $34 million as part of the plan to develop the South Suburban Airport. Although IDOT has acquired over 4,400 acres for the project, currently, they are exploring the best public-private partnership structure for the development and long-term operation of the South Suburban Airport. Also, HITS was there along, it says, the new owner of HITS, of course, shows. It says, "The new owner of HITS tours shows in the sun," which I didn't know if HITS stood for that. "Along with the show staff and participants are likely to make good use of the airport along with the hotels and restaurants," said general manager David Hayback. HITS produces equestrian, show hunters and jumpers events at sites around the United States. They plan to hold fourteen shows a year at Belmore this spring and summer. And then the last, the CSX freight... The freight rail investment will also spur economic development in the region. CSX Regional Vice President Thomas Livingston, along with I dot spokesman Sam Tuck, gave an update on the Chicago Regional Environmental Transportation Efficiency Program, CREATE. CREATE is the first of its kind partnership between the US DOT, the State of Illinois, City of Chicago, Metro, Amtrak and the nation's freight railways. So, CREATE will invest billions in the critical needed environment... I'm sorry, critically needed improvements to increase the efficiency of the regional passenger and freight rail infrastructure and enhance the quality of life for Chicago area residents. You wanna add anything else, Bob?
Just the HITS presentation was in more detail than what we got before as far as the arenas they're building and some of the statistics that they offered, and I can't remember if it was fifty-seven thousand or eighty thousand, but it was an astronomical number of hotel room nights they predicted in two thousand seventeen. And that's a huge number and there's no hotel within eight miles of the place. So, you gotta wonder if something might be generated out of that. They also talked about a big RV park on the south side of Belmore because these show people come in with their big RVs and trailers and stuff and they would use the south parking lot for their RV campground basically during the show, so. If you look, if you go by on DC Highway going up north to Creek, you'll see what they're doing on the side. I would, Belmore, so great.
Just to clarify for the public, if this was an economic development meeting at Bolt Field that was hosted by the South Suburban Mayor's managers.
All right. Blue Street Board Block update. We have prints to share with everyone. I think it was in everyone's packet. And if the board approves the design, we can go to bid for the most likely spring start, but it will also depend on whether we have sufficient funding for the project. We will not know until we let bids. It is the consensus of the board to approve the design by spinula. We can then go to sealed bid letting. So, what does the board feel? Do you have a chance to look at the prints?
Just to point out two things. The light that you see on there is the future, it's not part of the project. All we're doing is laying the piping, electric wiring and the future underneath the deck. There is one little piece of decking that's gonna have to go on private property and it's on the south side of Sittenbull because right now, the way the building sits, they're ADA compliant and our deck does not make them ADA compliant. So, we would have to put in this little ramp up to our deck on their property to their side door there to make this ADA compliant. Other than that, steps are minimized. Everything seems to be within one percent grade. The railing is different. The old railing was more of a up and down railing and Lexon was proposing a horizontal railing to save money. I think that would be a lot less expensive option to put the horizontal railing.
Is that a solid railing?
No, it's like a...
It's like a barn.
Two by six board or... yeah, one by six board across there. Posted on six by six and I don't know. I kinda like the other design better, but he says this would be a lot less expensive to do it that way. I don't know.
Might look more old rest.
Could bring the horses right up?
It will, I would assume.
I'll wear my boots with the stairs first and then it's closed.
I mean, this is highly up to the board and this is the design you guys were looking for. We would do a sealed bid on this and, you know, give everyone three, thirty-five days to bid and then we'd open them all because the prices were so close. I'm not getting into picking shoes on it.
Thoughts, comments, suggestions? Any negative comments? So, if there's no negative comments, then we must be all positive comments, so we will proceed and go.
What sort of slope are we looking at on this?
I think one percent.
From... it's gotta be larger than that.
Well, there's some steps.
From the north to the south.
Yeah, there's some steps, I believe, at the south end. It's ADA compliant from the north end, not the south end.
What I'm talking about from looking at the print, from right to left, north to the south, is this proposal to build it level? Is it a proposal to be... for it to be pitched? Were there any grade shot or anything to know that that pitch is less than one percent?
I know he shot grades, but I don't see it on the way out there to shoot the grades only. I don't know.
It always seemed like it was crowned. Isn't it crowned in the middle?
Yeah.
And he says it's ADA compliant. I know there's steps at the south end to bring it up to the height it has to be, but from the north to the south, it's within the one percent code or whatever it is. If he puts a seal on it, then he's gonna say it's ADA compliant. Now, it's not compliant in some of the buildings because the buildings are too high from the deck, but they're ADA... they're not ADA compliant now. The one building that is ADA compliant, Sittenbull, we violated with the new decking, so he's recommending that one ramp there, four foot wide and I think it's ten foot long to bring it up to our deck on the one side of the roof. But the rest of them, we don't have an obligation to bring them into compliance if they're not concerned. But we can't take a building out of compliance if they're... That's what he told me. And again, I don't know, John, I can see where he shot. He said he shot them out there.
How does this affect the residence that's on the corner there?
It shouldn't because the railing stops at a certain point. It doesn't go all the way to have to walk or straight up the stuff.
There's one reason I ask 'cause I think they use that lower level as... of that house as something.
The people that own it were at a meeting where we went through the design. We met with all those building owners in this room. Oh, man, that was a while back, wasn't it Frank? And she was here. I don't know, was... were you here? I know Frank was there.
I was here.
How long was that, three, four months?
Yeah, everybody was... They were all in agreement with the project.
So, basically the general plan, nothing's really new, it's some major tweaking designs and they were all aware of what we were studying.
So, now if this is ADA, where do they get up? Do they have to go to the end now?
Yeah, the handicap parking will be at the north end of the... of Blue Street and you will park there and then you would be ADA compliant all the way to the last building. At least on our boardwalk. There is a step up into those buildings that they will have to deal with on their own if they ever occupy.
Are these straight on parking spots or are they gonna be angles?
I don't think we got that for him.
Down, down, down.
And the new... I don't see where, but I'm having a hell of a time trying to read this, but anyway. It's where the lifting electric is.
I don't know. It shows circles, future lamp posts.
But it doesn't show the piping over it. Yeah, that was part of it for the other part. So, in other words, you're gonna put this in and then there's gonna be no piping and you're gonna have to tear it, you know?
I think there was piping in here.
First time there was.
There's space for conduit.
Space for conduit, but there is.
I know we talked about it because he kept on saying...
It's on the second page.
He's drawing on the left. There's a...
On the right, this red sign.
We made a thing with... There's...
Space for conduit.
I think there's two of these, right? I think there's two copies of those.
No, we can figure it out here. I don't see it here. And I don't know how hard it would be to order it.
I know it was supposed to be included because we talked about it at length as to where these wires were running under the boardwalk. You know, we had a problem with... He didn't want to drill holes through all of the joists. He wanted to find a way to do it where he didn't have to drill a hole through every joist going down. And there was a way of doing it by hugging that wire with a line of dilt.
Yeah, that's what he's got right here.
Is that what shows? I know we talked about that.
It's the drawing, second page, drawing on the left. Where the writing is on the right, it says...
Space for conduit run for white poles VIP. Or VIF.
Verified field.
That must be up against the building, I would think.
But the conduit wouldn't be running basically.
We'll have to ask that, right? That's a good question. Yeah, we'll get in there and talk over it first. We're not in a big hurry to bid this out anyway.
PBC then.
So, this one run, say like to the intersection. It says, "Boardwalk south and towards intersection."
Once it comes... once it gets to grade run, then the boardwalk ends. Once the sidewalk and the street are at grade, the same is true on the north end. Once the sidewalk and the street are at the same grade, then the boardwalk ends. Because we're trying to hide that cement thing that's sticking out there.
I'm not so crazy about this enclosure part here. I like to have an open concept. Yeah, railing part, yeah. I like to see it open.
Can't have more than four inch space. They can fit a four inch ball through it. Yeah. Vertical, you can do the same thing, but you can't fit a four inch... four inch ball, four inch radius between each of them. They're gonna be tight.
Well, if you're going for an old downtown look, that way would be the old downtown look. I mean, the other way would be, would screws it up.
Don't matter who you guys want. We'll go back to the drawing board. I don't care, you know?
Yeah, but nobody liked the other design better than this. But I don't know what... I mean, you're looking at a rendering of something. We don't really know what it meant to be there.
This year?
Yeah.
Just as far as the railing part?
It's just two by sixes.
Yeah, he's... it's actually one by sixes, isn't it?
One by sixes, maybe? One by sixes.
Yeah, he recommended that as opposed to the vertical because the vertical is gonna be a lot more, I guess, a little intensive on the screwing.
He said it's a lot quicker. But I think it's a lot quicker, but I don't think it's gonna be aesthetically pleasing as opposed to the other one.
I agree with Greg.
All right, well, we need the specs, what do you wanna see here?
So, we can do it, didn't we?
Well, that's the old... I'm not putting back and having you draw and saying, "I don't like that either."
Tell me what you want. Everybody remember the original rendering and I think everybody was happy with that. Have them include that.
You want the vertical lattice, one by... One by two.
No, two by two.
Great, Mr. Construction. All right, so we want two by two vertical rail.
Bellsters. That's what they call it.
Bellsters. Okay.
I knew there was some special term for that thing, Richard.
And we want to verify conduit in place, right?
Anything else for the good boy? No, the only thing that scares me will be that in six weeks.
Okay.
All right. No other questions? That ends my report.
Thank you. All I have is the December twenty-sixth meeting, we actually have a holiday and we consider canceling that meeting.
If you do cancel it, then the next meeting is gonna be a combined mission report with committee reports. So, we'll make that motion.
I'll make a motion canceling the December twenty-sixth village board meeting and having a full board meeting, having the committees added on to the December twelfth.
Second.
The motion on the floor, and there is a second. Any questions to the motion?
Meyer, yes. Basil?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Whalen?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Fire? Yes.
Hopefully reports are doing quicker.
Old business to come before the work. New business to come before the work.
I have a question. Are we any closer to tablets? Getting rid of these?
We discuss that at length. Yes, we are and I'll talk to you after the meeting about it. All right?
We're getting there, right? We're taking steps forward?
Because the deadline is April thirtieth, the order...
Yeah.
I haven't paid that yet. But I'll talk to you after the meeting. I gotta see about something else.
Or some nice black products out.
That's why I brought it up.
Is there any new business, motion here?
Some of them.
Motion for a second, any questions?
Aaron's, yes. Capros?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Fire? Yes.